This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, can folks hear me? I'll go ahead and pull up my agenda here. All right, work sessions are an opportunity for board members to discuss issues informally with staff and invited guests. The board encourages members of the public to attend work sessions and listen to the discussion, but there's generally no opportunity for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the board are welcome to do so during the board's regularly scheduled meetings held twice monthly. And we'll go ahead and get started with topic number one, which is the solid waste franchise ordinance. And Joanna, thank you for joining us. I'll go ahead and turn it over to you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Today we're talking about solid waste, a potential solid waste franchise. And first of all, I just want to say I am not feeling great, so if I start coughing, don't get worried. I'm getting over it, but that is why I'm not in the office today. And I'm so glad we do our meetings virtual anyway, but I might interrupt with a coughing fit. All right, so we're talking about today about solid waste franchises. And the county currently does not have a solid waste franchise. Now, I will note that it doesn't mean that we don't have two great providers within Clatsop County. If you can go to the next slide for me, Hannah. You can actually see how the two companies, Recology and Waste Management, have basically allocated their own service areas within Clatsop County. And currently, Recology provides the services to most of Clatsop County, roughly 4,300 customers. You will also note, those of you who live within a city, that they provide services to all of the different incorporated cities. Although Warrington's a little bit different because they provide the recycling services only to the city of Warrington. So Recology provides majority of the services. Waste Management is not so insignificant, though. They provide services to some of our more rural areas. Everywhere from Jewell, Fishhawk Lake, that's on the Clatsop County side, as well as the Columbia County side. And they provide services basically on Highway 26 from Camp 18 and east. So that tells you where they're currently providing service. They don't provide, both of them don't provide recycling services to all of the customers. Recology provides some of recycling services to some of the more suburban areas, those areas outside of incorporated cities. But I wanted to give you an idea that we do have current service. And so the question is, maybe you can go to the next slide, Hannah. Why we're really talking about franchises? So former boards have discussed this at least three times. Not your board, your board has not discussed this particular issue. And over the years, it's been discussed particularly with Recology's predecessor, Western Oregon Waste. And for whatever reason, we don't know why, they've dropped it over time. I will note, as I've said before, that Recology and Waste Management have really proven to be partners with us in exploring this possibility of a solid waste franchise. And staff has really done a lot of research along with Recology and Waste Management. We have reviewed all of the franchise agreements for each of the different incorporated cities. We have reviewed proposed franchise agreements with Recology. Recology's proposed a franchise agreement in the past, reviewed all those documents. We've reviewed things like, well, how do other counties manage their solid waste? And I will say, looking at most counties within Oregon, we are an anomaly. Most counties regulate their solid waste in some way. Can you go to the next slide, Hannah? So why should we adopt a solid waste franchise? I think, you know, we have a system, it seems to be working, but why adopt it? And I think this is kind of the question that you as Commissioners may be asking yourself. First of all, the ability you have is for the county to really regulate health and safety issues. And in fact, state law also asserts that it's our responsibility for planning for solid waste management. And I gave you the statute here, ORS 459017. When you have a solid waste franchise, you can regulate services such as solid waste pickup, recycling yard debris. And I will note that the state has actually given each of us as a county material recovery or recycling goals. And so those are set out by OAR. And they are something that the county should be meeting, those recovery goals. As a county governing body, you will have oversight over rate setting. So not to say that Recology or Waste Management are overcharging, but you would definitely have that ability to oversee the rate setting. And then there will be things like customer standards. And they can be anywhere from recycling yard debris, but it can also be things like starting or stopping services. When are franchises able to start or stop that? Can you give the next slide for me, Hannah? So we have a proposed approach. The first, first of all, I just want to kind of back up. There's lots of ways to handle solid waste franchises. I've looked at a number of different ways. We have the ways cities in Clatsop County have done it. We have ways that many of the other counties in our state have done it. And so we've followed their approach, approaches like Clackamas County, Washington County, and there's a few more. But essentially what has happened is there's an ordinance that requires all solid waste franchise operators to obtain a franchise, to apply and obtain a franchise from the local governing body. So step one would be to adopt that solid waste franchise ordinance, requiring solid waste operators to obtain an ordinance from the county. So you as a board would hold two readings, just like any other ordinance, and adoption would be 30 days or at some other point after the second hearing. And I provided you an example earlier today. I'm sure you didn't have a chance to look at it, but it has things like the franchise will be 10 years. Renewal will be upon meeting the requirements of the other franchises. And generally, I will say, once a franchise is granted, it continues on. Because most operators are great operators and will continue to meet the needs of the community. But there is that 10-year renewal period of time. So step two then would be to adopt solid waste rules. And those rules are really going to be the nitty gritty. So the framework is really going to be in the ordinance. And then the solid rules would be, the waste rules would be more of the nitty gritty service details. And that would be a board adoption by resolution. And I'm going to note that we have already started the process with collaborating with our haulers. But really, this nitty gritty is where I think the haulers are going to have the most input into what it looks like. And we pulled something from Washington County as an example to get the conversation started with the haulers, that we simplified quite a bit. And we have only had an opportunity to talk with Waste Management. We had got some of their comments back. We recognize that it is going to need further tweaks. We have to laugh a little bit because we borrow from Washington County, which of course hauls all their waste through Metro. And Metro has some very specific requirements about colors of bins. And we recognize that colors of bins are probably not going to be that big a deal for Clatsop County. So that's going to be an easy one for us to change on rules. And do we need to have certain colors of bins? But this is the level of detail that these rules will have. But we will collaborate and work through the rules, if this is the direction the board gives us. And then step three would be to implement. So number one, the board would adopt the ordinance. Number two, they would have the rules they would adopt. And then three, of course, implementation. And then the board would consider the rates proposed by the haulers. Again, I really want to say that the haulers are doing an excellent job of serving our county. And they have been working really well with us. We encourage the conversation. This is the first conversation we've had with your board about this. And so we want to have that collaboration spirit and move forward with a solid waste franchise approach. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for County Council? Commissioner Banks?
So just to be clear, you know, I've been hoping and praying and pushing for recycling availability to unincorporated areas since January. And so is this our methodology of which to get that, get to that end goal?
Yes, Commissioner, thank you for your question. In the step two, the solid waste rules, that would be the area where recycling would be incorporated and the requirements for recycling. Now, I will say recycling can be changed in different areas. So for example, if you have a more urban area, perhaps recycling is provided, I don't know, we'll say every other week. And maybe recycling is provided once a month to more rural areas. It just depends on what we can, what the specific areas will dictate. And I think we're looking to enhance the services folks already receive.
Excellent. This is great news. So I'm really excited. So thank you.
Commissioner Toyoka?
Just a question as far as cost. Is there associated costs?
I think as with, if we're always enhancing services, there will always be a cost to those services. Recycling is not free. It is, sometimes it is seen as something that can make money. It is not, in that case, is more of a commodity that often costs the haulers money to recycle. So if you do include recycling, and that's, I hear Commissioner Bang, what we're including, it may very well mean that some of the rates may have to be reflected of that. But frankly, we don't know what that will look like until we get to the rate setting process. And again, you all have that rate setting process in step three of implementation. So I think that's really important point because we want to be realistic about, we don't want something to be provided that's recycling every week if it's going to not, number one, be utilized. But number two, if it's going to cost the customers quite a bit of money. So it's that balancing act. And I think it's a conversation with the haulers and making sure that as staff, we hear what you guys are saying about recycling and making sure that we implement that in the proposed staff approach.
I guess another part of the question is cost to us, is cost to the county, cost to the taxpayers? Is there additional staffing, additional, you know, overhead required for the county, for the taxpayers, if we go this route?
So another excellent question. But no, at this time, we are hopeful that we can do this within the staffing that we currently have. We're hopeful that once we get this kicked off, that we will be able to utilize what staff we have. One of the concerns may be reviewing rate setting. And that's certainly something that we've already started to talk to an outside consultant, Marina and consultants. And they do a lot of the rate setting work for other counties. And so I would encourage us to continue to do that, to utilize outside consultants who have more expertise in that type of thing. And I think it will be something that we can do within our own staffing levels if we utilize some of those consultants, if that helps answer your question.
Any other questions for County Council? You might have covered this, Joanna, but as far as time.
I'm sorry, I think you cut out a little bit, but I think your question was, what's the timeframe that we're looking at?
Lines for each one of these steps. Do you have any kind of estimate on what we're looking at for step?
So I'm sorry, you cut out a little bit, but I think we're looking at timelines and estimates and what it might be. We're hopeful that when we receive some feedback from our franchise haulers, and again, we have the ordinance drafted, we have some rules already drafted. And of course, they're very in draft format. We're hopeful that when we get some comments back from Recology and some further comments back from Waste Management, again, Waste Management has already been kind enough to chat with us, that we can start to get, some of those ideas can get more coalesced. And we're hopeful within the next couple of months, we can start moving forward with the franchise ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? My video is frozen, so I can't see anybody, but maybe just speak up if you have a question. Yeah, sorry, I'm just having some technical issues on my end. Now I can see people. Does any other questions? Okay. Well, thank you, Joanna. Appreciate the presentation. We'll go ahead and move on to the next topic, which is the review of Planning Commission applicants. And Gail Hendrickson, our Community Development Director is here. And this is on page four. Gail?
Thank you, Commissioners. We currently have two openings on the Planning Commission. It is a commission of seven members, and right now, we currently have five appointed members. We've had one opening since February of this year, 2021. And then a second opening was created in October, when the board terminated the appointment of Robert Strickland. Following that October meeting, the county did go out with an additional call for applicants, just to remind everyone that we had open positions. We do recruit year round and accept applications at any time and keep them on file. But we did do an extra publicity boost back in October, and we had a deadline of November 15th. At that time, when the deadline passed and this agenda item was prepared, we currently have six applicants. They are Jennifer Johnston, who's in the Elsie Jewell area, Jason Crousher, who's in Clatsop Plains, Michael Magyar, who's in Lewis and Clark, Clark W. Powers, who's in Clatsop Plains, Katie Pritchard, who lives in Astoria, and Jennifer Rasmussen, who's in the Northeast Planning Area. When we look at Planning Commission appointments, which the board will do on January 12th, the bylaws do have some restrictions that determine who is eligible for membership. In our case, the bylaws restrict members from incorporated areas to a maximum of two. And currently, we do have two members from incorporated areas that do serve on the Planning Commission. If you were to want to appoint a third member or someone from an incorporated area, then either the bylaws would need to be changed or one of the existing members would need to be removed from the Planning Commission. State statute also limits how many people we can have on our Planning Commission that are in professions that are related to land development. And that's limited to a maximum of two as well. And that we cannot change with our bylaws because it is coming out of state statute. So right now, we do have one person on the Planning Commission who lists his profession as construction. And so that person are a general contractor, so we could appoint one more. And of the six applicants that we have, we do have two that are also in the land development professions. So that would need to be also kept in mind when we get to January 12th to consider the appointments. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Commissioner Banks has a question.
I had a brief conversation with Commissioner Thompson this morning, and she brought to my attention a thought of, it would be nice to be able to meet them. She mentioned that in the past, that there was not an interview process per se, but there was a moment where we could actually meet the people. I only know personally one of the applicants. And so I'm interested in a work session or a conversation. I know with COVID and everything, that has really constrained our ability to have like open dialogue with folks. And so I just was wondering if that was a possibility.
I had that same conversation with Commissioner Thompson. And I would just, my experience in the city of Warrington, that is something that we asked, is the opportunity to have the applicant come to a commission meeting and introduce themselves and be available to answer any questions. And I think that is helpful, especially when you don't know the candidates. It's hard to gain all of your knowledge off of an application rather than meeting them in person. And whether we set something up as a go-to meeting work session in the future. I think that that's not a bad suggestion. What does the rest of the commission feel? Commissioner Toyoka, go ahead.
I fully agree that we wonderful to speak to them, you know, and see if we could get a Zoom together to actually talk to applicants. And, you know, selfishly, I would like someone from District Two to be represented. And then also in the Planning Commission, you know, no one's under District One. So it'd be nice to have, you know, different representations. So even if in the recruiting process, if we haven't had anybody apply from District One, I mean, if we could even extend that to try to recruit someone or, you know, a couple of people to have a choice. Because that's, you know, District One has a lot of growth, an exponential amount of growth. And I think it would be beneficial to have representation on the Planning Commission.
I agree, Commissioner Toyoka. Unfortunately, I haven't seen anyone from District One apply. And I had a couple of people that suggested that they would or intimated that they would. And so I'm surprised that no one has from District One. And I don't know if they just decided against it or didn't know how to do so, but I agree. Commissioner Webb?
Yeah. These proposals raise a lot of questions in my mind. With our new, with our new redistricting plan, which I guess is still in the proposal stages, we have a concentration of districts that are virtually completely incorporated. And I have kind of mixed feelings about that. I know that when I began representing my present district, it was really good for me to learn, you know, which had a substantial rural area. It was really good for me to learn about the issues and concerns of people in the rural areas. And so there's a part of my heart that says, gosh, wouldn't it be cool if every commissioner could represent both urban and rural interests? On the other hand, I respect the voices that we heard from our citizens that said that they wanted to be sort of in like-minded, probably isn't the right word, but in communities of interest that were the same. And so what that means is that we are excluding a very large part of our population from ever being on the county Planning Commission. And I find that just a little troublesome. And I was wondering if maybe we could consider a couple of other options, which might be. And I guess first, it's a question for Gail Hendrickson. Gail, does state law stipulate what representation across the county looks like in terms of numbers?
When you say in terms of numbers, Commissioner, are you talking about representing a specific population base like the board members do, where you're equally representing a certain number of constituents? No, it does not.
Or, okay, okay. And my other question is, does the state law include surveyors as a part of people who are involved in the building trades?
Yes, it does.
In the building, excuse me?
Yes, it does.
I find that troublesome. I just, I think it might be time for us to sit back and take a larger look at what the Planning Commission needs to look like. I think that, I think that especially those in urban areas are right up against, I think in virtually every part of the county, people in our cities are right up against pending development is the right word, I guess, but, you know, potential development. And I think that in looking especially at our comp plan in the future of what the responsibilities of the Planning Commission are, those are really our big challenges for the future is how we urbanize in a responsible way and how we provide increasing demand for urban services. And so to me, to minimize those people, I don't know, it just, this just doesn't look quite right to me. And I wonder if there isn't a way, perhaps by expanding the members on the commission? Gail, I assume that state law doesn't address that?
Commissioner, I'd have to double check, but I think that there is, there are specifications in state statute that say how many members are allowed to be on a Planning Commission, but I would need to double check to confirm.
I would, I'd kind of appreciate your doing that, if you could, okay? And I'm sorry, I could go to the, you know, to the law myself, but. And so as I say, I just think that given the several concerns that maybe it might be time. The other thing to think about is that three of our current members' terms expire next June. So we'd be facing the same issue in six months. And so I just think maybe it's time to take a step back and really think about what we, you know, the kind of representation and abilities that we're seeking in our Planning Commission members. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb. Commissioner Bang?
Two questions. The first question was, have we received any applications after the due date of November 15th?
We did not.
Okay. And then my second thought was, you know, kind of following up with Commissioner Webb, that after our redistricting process is complete, that we take a moment and take a look at the situation and reevaluate because she brings some thoughts to the forefront that, you know, I don't disagree with. And I feel like, you know, our redistricting could go either way, but if it becomes, you know, communities of common interest. We have three very large communities of common interest, Warrington, Astoria, and Gerhart Seaside. And so it would only make sense. But I would say to wait until after our redistricting process. And when is that date to be completed?
Commissioner, we, as far as the redistricting, we'll be coming before you on Wednesday, the 8th, with those recommendations. And then the board will need to adopt, and County Council can correct me if I'm wrong, but will need to adopt by ordinance the new district maps. And there is a necessary process for two readings or if applicable, an emergency reading or anything like that to meet our charter timeline.
Okay. I feel like because we have a charter timeline with the redistricting, that potentially maybe that choice needs to be made first before we take a look at. I don't want to delay adding new Planning Commissioners, but I feel like we're kind of in this weird situation. And I do, I want to, I want, want to make sure that we do this correctly. I don't, what are your, what are your thoughts?
Well, this is, I would just say, I think your point about being fair to those that have applied is very important. I mean, we've asked folks, and we've extended the time period for people to submit applications. And I think they're waiting to hear, you know, what our process is going to be. And I certainly want to be respectful to them and respectful to our current Planning Commission as well, who's been waiting in limbo for us to kind of conclude this process. So, you know, I, right now, I guess I'm most comfortable just having an opportunity to meet the candidates and have that discussion. And then as Commissioner Webb points out, you know, there are. And then as Commissioner Webb points out, you know, there are going to be three positions that are going to be either reappointed or open next, next June for us to, to also kind of discuss. And things might, you know, the, the redistricting will have changed by then. And that might or might not influence those appointments. So, I don't know, I just, I do want to make sure we're, we're fair to, to those that have applied and that we're not changing, you know, moving the goalposts as, as we're going. Anyway, I'll turn it over to, to Gail. Maybe she wants to respond as well.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on Commissioner Webb's question. And yes, ORS 215.030 subsection one does limit membership to either five, seven, or nine members.
Commissioner Bang.
Well, I can't disagree with anything that you said, Commissioner Quila. So, I mean, I'm all for just keeping the, the thought of the bylaws on the back burner. But just kind of in, in our minds as we go through all of these processes. Because I, I perceive that, you know, things, things may or may not change. And so it's just, I'm open to conversation, I guess. So, thank you.
Any other comments? Would we be comfortable having a work session to actually have the, invite the applicants to be here via go-to meeting? Commissioner Webb? Okay. Anything else? Gail?
No, we, I will work with the county manager's office to schedule a work session with the candidates.
Okay. Yeah, thank you very much. I think that that's the best way to proceed at this time. And if we don't have any other comments on this item, we'll move on to item number three, which is the comprehensive plan update. Goal 10 is housing. And I think we're all very interested in the housing discussion. And we have the presentation on page 20 and 60 minutes allocated for this. I'll turn it over to Gail.
Yes, thank you. Before I begin my presentation, I did just want to take a moment to remind the board members that I believe in last week's county manager report, there was some information presented and requesting some input from the board about how to schedule public input events on the comp plan update and to see if there were any preferences that you may have for certain events in your particular district. So I just wanted to remind you all, if you can, get some feedback to the county manager's office on that. And then we can start working with everyone after the new year and the holidays to start scheduling some public input events. So, all right, thank you. So, goal 10, housing, everybody's favorite topic. We do have quite a bit to talk about here. So, the intent of goal 10, the statewide planning goal is very simple. It's to provide for the housing needs of the citizens of the state. And there are certain administrative rules that implement that mission. And as a county, a lot of the requirements of goal 10 don't apply to us in a mandated sort of way. For example, we do not have to do a buildable lands inventory. We do not have to do a housing needs analysis. So compared to urban incorporated areas, we, we have a lot less responsibility. But it also gives us some flexibility to choose what level we want to use to implement our goal 10 requirements. So part of goal 10 is that along with goal 14, which is urbanization, and goal six, which is land, water, and air use quality, the intent of the statewide planning system is really to direct higher density to urban or urbanizable areas. And that means incorporated cities and urban growth boundaries. And the reason for that is counties, as we just discussed at the beginning of this meeting, we, we don't have a high level of service standards. We don't have a lot of utilities. Sometimes we may not have any utilities that we operate. We don't have the same type of solid waste collection, as we talked about earlier. We don't have the, we don't run the school systems and things like that. So really, we want to encourage growth to be occurring in higher densities in the urban areas. And so in 2019, the county and the five cities in, in Klasik County completed this housing strategies report that was released going on three years ago now. And in that, there were a lot of recommendations that did primarily focus on the cities and things that cities could do to change their codes or their regulations to help facilitate the development of housing. Given the pandemic and all the changes that have occurred over the past almost two years now in terms of where people live, where people work, how much they're willing and able to pay for real estate. I think some of those recommendations may be out of date, but they are the most current ones that we have that are specifically applicable to Klasik County. The study, as we are probably well aware by now, has also cited the fact that short-term rentals and vacation homes are having an impact on housing availability and housing costs. Again, as things have changed throughout the pandemic, I'm not sure how applicable that is and to what extent anymore. But we are also working with short-term rentals in a separate tract moving forward. And we'll be handling that as a sort of different project, a little bit separate from this right now. At some point, they may merge back together, but right now they're kind of having two different discussions. The other thing that we've talked about previously when we reviewed all of the 18 planning goals is that back in April of 2019 and July of last year, the planning commission did go through the housing strategies report and provide some recommendations to the board or the boards that were in place at that time. However, those boards did not take any actions on those recommendations. And some of those recommendations had to do with the county's parking requirements back in April of 2019. And then last year, as we were considering what might occur as eviction moratoriums expired, there were some recommendations that came from the planning commission about how the county might be able to take steps to ease or mitigate those impacts that might be coming from those evictions. So I'll stop and pause there. Any, any questions so far? I see Commissioner Banks has her hand up.
Sorry about that, Commissioner Banks.
That's it, that's okay. Um, so I was just curious, how many STRs are actually in our urban growth boundary? Do we know that?
In the urban growth boundaries, I do not know. The only urban growth boundary where our ordinance applies, applies is Gerhart. And off the cuff, I would say there are probably less 10 or less in, in the Gerhart urban growth boundary that we have jurisdiction over.
And then I had a second comment or question. So I've had some concerns from constituents raised to me about our urban growth boundaries. And so, and, and the rules that, that they fall under for how those boundaries can be changed. And it was my assumption that those are not something that we, we can just, you know, go out and change as a board. Am I correct with that assumption?
You are absolutely correct, Commissioner. There are several statutes and rules pertaining to urban growth boundaries and how you expand them. And it will be a partnership between the city and the county in order to do that. And in order for a city to justify moving the boundary, they have to be able to show that they are lacking land for a specific use for needs that they foresee over a 20-year period. So we can't just go approach Warranton or Cannon Beach or somewhere and say, hey, we'd like you to shift your boundary so you can build more housing. It, it just won't be that simple.
That's, that is what I thought. I wanted to, to have somebody else clarify that because there, there have been concerns from, from our rural constituent area of, of, you know, will, I guess, a willy-nilly changing of boundaries. And I was almost 100% that that is not what we can do. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Banks. And I can verify from Warranton's case that it is a very involved process in order to try to move your urban growth boundary. Commissioner Toyoka.
I guess, you know, speaking to that, in terms like if you look at the Klasik Plains, some of that areas, Gerhart, Seaside, you know, the inventory says, you know, of buildable lands or, you know, of, of land that is earmarked for housing. And then they, then you inject, you know, affordable or market-based housing into that equation. A lot of that inventory is not going to fall into affordable or market-based housing criteria. You know, the land itself, you know, purchasing a, a home site in, in a lot of areas of Gerhart or even like, you know, Cannon Beach, Arch Cape. You know, the house of the, the price of the land is way above median or sometimes market-based. And then you have the home. So if we have to address those issues of affordable housing or market-based housing, I think you have to look at that equation in terms of what is the inventory? And what, what inventory is available, what type of housing will be there? If it doesn't fit the criteria for affordable or market-based, then we have to look at, you know, other avenues of finding that within those regions. Because quite frankly, if you're working in Cannon Beach or Arch Cape or, and you find that the only housing would be maybe Warranton or somewhere else, that's a long commute. So we have to find some solutions, you know, and then I guess redefine or reassess our determination of what is a, in our inventory, you know, how that falls into the housing, you know, whether it's affordable or market-based.
Commissioner Banks.
Does Klasik County have any further usable opportunity zones? Or maybe that's the wrong word. Oh, I'm sorry, somebody will have to, maybe I'm off track.
Enterprise, are you talking about enterprise zones? Go ahead.
Well, residential though, not business zone.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any type of incentive zone similar to an enterprise zone that applies to residential property.
Any other questions? Okay, Gail, we'll move on.
Okay, so as part of our update, we pulled our building permit applications and permits that have been issued from 2005 through the day before Thanksgiving. And we only went back to 2005 because that's the only data we have. Prior to that, the state actually ran our building codes program. And so it wasn't until that date that the county took it over and were able to track the data. But going back to 2005, we had, we have issued 912 permits for new single-family and two-family construction. And it's broken down by planning area. You'll see that over the years, the majority of the growth has occurred in Klasik Plains, with 298 permits issued, followed by the Northeast Planning Area, which had 254 permits issued. And then Lewis and Clark had 191 permits issued. The places where we see the least amount of growth are in the southwest or southeast corner of the quadrant of the county. Elsie Jewel and Seaside Rural had 51 and 39 permits issued over the past 16 years respectively. And then Southwest Coastal, which is the Arch Cape Cove Beach area, had 79 permits issued in that same 16-year period. So just to give a little perspective about where our growth is occurring right now.
Commissioner Bang, she had a question?
I did have a question regarding this, this table. Is it only for new homes? Or, or are we taking into account homes that are replacing, say, somebody's tearing down a home or an old farmhouse and then building on a different footprint?
So if the house is being completely demolished, the permit would come in, there would be two permits, one to demolish and then one to construct a new single-family home. So would we, we would be picking that up. What we wouldn't be picking up necessarily is if someone added a bedroom on to their house or came in for a remodel or in addition to maybe add more space for their house. It also didn't look at anything above two units, primarily because we have so few zones where that type of use is even permitted. And the only one that has occurred in recent memory since I've been here is the Jewel School did build a quadruplex about a year ago.
So, just so that I'm clear, these numbers then may be inflated a bit. This isn't new families, new homes moving into the area per se. It could be somebody has owned this land and they're just building a replacement home or something on, on, okay.
Correct. Okay, so moving on and going back to our 2019 housing strategies report. As I stated, there were, in the report, a lot of recommendations, which the report preparers specifically said applied to cities. However, if we look at them, I think there are some that I've marked here that possibly could apply to unincorporated areas of the county. For example, things like allowing residential in our commercial zones, which for the most part, we do not do at this point unless it's a unit, a housing unit attached to a business to support the business. So if you had a manager living on site to, you know, handle your construction company or something and they had a housing unit there, that's when we, we would allow it. But we don't just allow higher-density housing or single-family housing typically in our commercial zones. So there are some options there. Making sure that we've streamlined our, and correctly identified our off-street parking requirements, looking at allowing cottage cluster type of housing in certain districts. And there's 10 different recommendations, nine of which I think we could apply to ourselves here in Klasik, in the unincorporated area of Klasik County. So one of the policy questions that I had put forward for the board today is whether or not we wanted, or you wanted as a board to move forward with including any or all of these that are applicable in goal 10 as we do our rewrite. And so I'll, I'll stop there with my first question.
So on number six, when you say facilitate missing middle housing, are you, is that just basically referring to middle-class housing?
Not necessarily middle-class in terms of income. It's the missing middle where you, it's the, the phrase de jour, where you've got your single family on one hand and typically it can be, you know, more expensive and you've got higher density. But looking at things like duplexes, triplexes, and quadruplexes, similar to what's been required in certain parts of the state with House Bill 2001 that passed, I believe in 2019, and where they're actually mandated to do it. But opening up the single-family residential zones to allow a little bit more alternative product to be constructed.
Well, you know, I'm not against, unless somebody brings up a, a different thought process, I'm not against adding these strategies to, to our, our goals sheet. I just, we are in a desperate straits when it comes to housing in our area. We can't hire. And I, like, I just heard from, you know, my husband's job, they, they tried to hire somebody. Her person couldn't find housing. And so they still have so many job openings. The hospital has so many job openings. I mean, we need to do something.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I think we all agree. I know planning staff recently had a conversation with a professional person who's been hired in the county. And that person started out living in a rental unit in Westport that had no running water and had broken windows and is now living in a and is now living in a tough shed that is being rented out. So, and that's, that's a professional person as well. So it's, you know, it hits all across and it's very difficult to find housing here. So. Okay, another.
I see Commissioner Webb has a question.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, at, at our recent AOC meeting, we had a very robust presentation about a new law that was passed in the legisla, in the last legislative session about putting the Oregon Housing and Community Services Department in, in, in an oversight role on doing some regional housing analysis. We had a presentation done, or made by Deschutes County, which has, actually, there's a cog in that area. And it was very robust. And I'm a little confused about why our staff hasn't come to us with, with some knowledge about this, this new legislation and whether or not it's going to apply to us. Does staff have, have any input about that?
I do not, Commissioner Webb. I'm not familiar with the particular legislation you're speaking of. I know that about a year ago, that there was an initial draft Regional Housing Needs Analysis that was put forward. But I'm not aware of the new legislation that you're referring to.
Okay, I, I think it might be something that we take a close look at. Especially in my work with, with NOAA, where we are in partnership with two other counties, Columbia and Tillamook. We talk occasionally about long-term strategic planning in terms of where NOAA resources should be, should be and where the need is, et cetera. And doing a rough statistical analysis told me that, that we were in pretty good shape in terms of the distribution of public, of assisted housing within our three counties. But there, in, in any kind of a regional analysis, one must always bear in mind to what extent the housing market is regional. And one of the things that, that I have learned in doing those numbers is that, for instance, with those three counties with, with whom we partner on any number of things, we really don't have a regional housing market. We're, we're quite different in terms of our housing market. For instance, Columbia County has an enormous seepage of residents who work in Multnomah County. Tillamook County, I'm not really, I think it's fairly insular as well. And in, and in Clatsop County, we have very little leakage outside of the county of both incoming and outgoing people. I think the most significant numbers I could find was the Wanamill, where a number of, of their employees do live in Columbia County. But otherwise, it's, our region is fairly static in Clatsop County. But it is, in fact, quite vigorous in Clatsop County. We have a number of people in the northwest, excuse me, in the northeast and southeast who, who commute to the coast, obviously to the coastal cities where the jobs are. And we have people who commute up and down the I-5, or the 101 Carter as well. So I just wondered if, if the, the presentations that we were given at AOC were, were quite robust in terms of what our expectations should be from this legislation. So I, I think it would definitely, before we get too aggressive with, with this, with this goal, that maybe we need to look into, to what those new state mandates are all about so that we can be responsive and meet them.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb. I see Commissioner Bangs has a follow-up.
Well, it was just a follow-up question for Commissioner Webb. Are you talking about the legislation that opens up the ability to build a second dwelling on your single-dwelling property? No, not that one. Okay.
No, that, that's, that's an ADU stipulation in rural areas. It's entirely something completely different from this.
Okay, I was just trying to track with you and I couldn't figure, figure out where you were going. So, okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Gail, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay. So also in our Housing Strategies Report from 2019, there were some draft policies that were included in there that I have adapted for unincorporated areas. And there are six of them that would be applicable to unincorporated Clatsop County. And so my second question for the board is, do we want to include these draft policies or something similar to them when we work on Goal 10?
Have folks had an opportunity to kind of review these?
Yeah, they were also included in your agenda package for today as well.
I think these seem to be good areas of focus and good policies. Any comments, questions? Commissioner Toyoka?
Just one overall comment. I read through the entire packet previously. And just the overall thing I looked at was, you know, everything is wonderful. We address all these issues. It's just a matter of, you know, capacity for most current situations. And then land use, where are we going to put extra homes? Where are we going to, it has to be a thoughtful process. You know, you're talking about flexibility of, you know, ADUs or even some other, you know, where to cite affordable housing or, you know, or even median housing. It's got to be a thoughtful process because, you know, you can't just try to facilitate a affordable or median home in a community where there's, you know, very expensive homes to drive down those prices. Those, that'll cause problems. So I, and I think it's, my overriding thought process in this was like, it's all going to be about land use and where are we going to do this in the county? You can't go west, so we've got to be looking east. You know, we run out of land here at the Pacific Ocean. So we are, we're kind of tied in by the Columbia and the Pacific. So we have to look at what's available and, and then, you know, accordingly, look at what is the thoughtful process of capacity and proper land use in those areas. Again, that's just a overriding comment on the entire process.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioner Toyoka, Commissioner Bangs?
I always circle back to a statement here. And in the final number six, it says, "The county should facilitate replacement and alteration of manufactured homes within an existing mobile home park." And I am just confused on how the county can facilitate something like that. Are we talking about we should create incentives? What are, I mean, where are we going here? I just would like a little bit more of a clear, anytime, anytime the phrase "the county should facilitate", I always kind of make a pause and say, "Do we have that ability? Can we do that? Can we afford to do that?" Like, where, where is our boundary of, I, I don't know. I just, I feel like we're committing ourselves to something that we can't actually do.
Commissioner Webb?
I'd like to shout hallelujah to Commissioner Bangs' feelings about this. It's just so true. I mean, one of the things in Oregon that we have learned over the course of our years since Senate Bill 100 was passed was this whole issue of infrastructure. And I know that Gail Henrickson, who has worked in the state of Florida, where, what's the word again, Gail? Not, you know, that you have to put infrastructure in in a timely manner in order to assume growth. What's that word?
Concurrentcy.
Concurrentcy, thank you. The state of Florida is one of the few states in the country who have figured out that issue and how you get that done. And I think that, that one of the, one of my disappointments, I guess, from the housing study that was done, two, two notable ones. One of them, I felt that their, that their recommendations for, for development, for increasing housing supply in rural areas were very weak. Because, maybe because it's just really hard to increase housing supply in rural areas, given our land use laws. But secondly, when, when we take a look at what each of the cities have done, they haven't done very much. And, and that in order to move a UGB, which is really what it takes to increase housing in any jurisdiction or any region, cities and the county have to talk to each other about it. And, I mean, look at what we're going through in the Clatsap Plains in terms of infrastructure. I believe that it was very bad decision-making for, for Clatsop County to have allowed all that development to happen in Clatsap Plains, given the infrastructure constraints. And so once again, and now we have, you know, Warnton saying, "No, we're, we're not going to take on that county's bad decision." And I'm not sure I blame them. So it seems to me we need something maybe that is a more robust recommendation that our cities and the county work more closely together about, you know, I don't know where the hell we're going to put new housing without the city's cooperation. And so I really, I mean, I really support Commissioner Bangs' issue here that these are all things, almost all, that we can't do by ourselves, that we need the cooperation of the cities with. And, and I think we need to be creative and maybe suggesting a way that we can make that happen. You know, small things like, well, let me just say that, okay. One of the things that has happened in my tenure in this district is that immediately south of the city, across Youngs Bay, we have the, I think, the only zoned industrial land in the county. And we also have a pretty, not aggressive, but we have a great need for housing there. And yet, that can't happen because the city of Astoria has the water rights to the Youngs River, which is where that area gets its water. And they refuse to share those rights with Miles Crossing. It's those sorts of little, little, well, big things, but, you know, that, that we've got to start addressing is, is if we're going to build more housing, where are we going to build it? And we must build it in places with infrastructure. We have to give people water and sewage disposal, et cetera. So I'm, I, I guess I would like to see a more vigorous statement about the need for the county and the cities to cooperate with each other. I've been involved in hiring several upper management jobs recently. And people say, "Oh, that looks like a great place to live." And they come here and they say, "Well, the schools look pretty good, but uh, where am I going to live?" I mean, I could name you people who have turned down jobs in Clatsop County because they couldn't find a place to live. I think this is very much bordering on a, on a crisis. And, and it's really, I, I think it's something that we have to be a little bit more proactive in terms of asking the cities to please, let's all work together on this issue. And to, to make it, especially since in the coming couple of years, we're going to have some money to put into infrastructure. And infrastructure seems to be the biggest, the biggest constraint that we have toward expanding our UGBs. And I, I don't blame cities for that, but maybe now we have a way to pay for it. So I'd like to see some kind of vigorous language here about the need for city-county cooperation on this housing issue. I just jumped off my soapbox. Thank you.
No, thank you, Commissioner Webb. And I agree, we do need to coordinate our activities. And it certainly is the biggest issue for cities is that they don't have the infrastructure to support the development and they don't have the resources to pay for it. So I'm hopeful that there will be a change in that dynamic. Commissioner Bangs?
Well, Commissioner Webb brings up a valid point in regards to communication between governing bodies. And I feel like we are all kind of, each individual governing body is, is kind of doing their own thing. But what we're finding here in these, in these policies and in these goals is there's a lot of crossover. And so I'm just wondering if we can place a goal somewhere that includes communication. Because it, it's a valid point, like there is a lack of communication between governing bodies. And I feel like it would only benefit our county as a whole if we can kind of open that door to communication. And it's not to step on toes, it's not to do anything of that sort, but it, it's to, to get all the brains in the room solving, solving problems. And I feel like that, that at this, we're getting to a point where that's going to be very necessary. So anyhow, that's my two cents.
Thank you, Commissioner Bangs. Any other discussion? We're on these policy questions. Any specific, yeah, go ahead. I know Commissioner Bangs, you got your hand up there. Commissioner Bangs?
Just in regards to the unsheltered persons in Goal 10, I do feel like, you know, we should address that in some way, get some, some people into the conversation that are dealing with that on a daily basis. I can think of Beacon House. I can think of a number of entities that are dealing with or unsheltered. And so they would have a very probably value, they would have valuable input, I think, in, in this conversation, just regarding number nine.
And I see that Commissioner Thompson has been able to join us. Welcome, Commissioner Thompson. And I know Commissioner Thompson has a number of things she'd like to, like to say on this topic. I, I see that Commissioner Toyoka had his hand up there. Commissioner Toyoka?
Yeah, just a couple of comments too on this. Just started on number one. I was like, just to kind of go back to our planning commission and the representation. It just, this just further highlights is if 80% of the land in Clatsop County is unincorporated, and we have a, you know, only, we're limited to two members from unincorporated, it seems like not a good representation of those who live in unincorporated. So to that point, I was, I would say, is there a review or what could we do on that? And then secondly, on the, the unsheltered person is a homeless. Could we engage in a conversation with like our Veteran Services Officer? He had a blueprint, a template that the county could utilize for a cluster and a development with services and everything to not reinvent the wheel. But I know I've had a great conversation with Josh. They have a template on something like that that could be incorporated into this plan. So I think we have resources available right now to not reinvent the wheel. We can pull in some of these other people and help out, you know, consolidate the knowledge and pull it all together in one document instead of trying to, everybody working independently. And my last comment would be, sometimes, you know, when we put the facilitate in these documents, there's a fine line between facilitate and infringe. To facilitate for one group, we're infringing on others. So we have, again, there's that fine line and we have to really pay attention to where we are and the situationally, how we act on each item that we're reviewing. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Toyoka. Good points. I do want to point a clarification. I think we were talking about the unincorporated in the planning commission. And there are no more than two that can be in incorporated, correct? The rest have to be unincorporated. Yeah, just, just wanted to clarify that. Yeah.
And that is something that we can change in the bylaws. That's not set by state statute, but the professional land surveyors and development people is.
Okay. Commissioner Bangs?
I just want to follow up on that word facilitate also because I feel like that commits us to something financially. It also commits staff to something that maybe we don't have the capacity for. And so as we're moving through goals, being very, very cautious of our verbiage. And so as we're moving through goals, being very, very cautious of our verbiage. I'm all for supporting something, but when we commit to something, then it follows into what Commissioner Toyoka was saying of, of potential infringement. So anyhow, I just wanted to, I concur with Commissioner Toyoka. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, sir. As you can tell, my vision is still impaired. I appreciate my colleagues' forbearance. I had a lot to say about this and will do what I can to listen to the recording, to catch up with what you all have said and to speak further with Department Director Henrickson to, to clarify my points. The overall thing I wanted to say was, when I'm looking at this housing policy, stepping back, what occurs to me is when the original land use planning was done in the late seventies and early eighties, the policy concern was the availability of land for housing. Since that time, we've seen a shift. The priority concern now is the affordability of housing. So there are economic issues involved with this. When I look at housing, I look at how does the economy interact with it? How do the people have jobs? How is their stable and adequate income related to people's capacity to afford housing? We're seeing the impact of a disconnect in that. I don't see that reflected in this document. I think there's a noble attempt. I really am grateful for the planning director, the planning staff's efforts for these long years and all the community volunteers to wrestle with these issues. I think it's incumbent on the county board of commissioners, the members of the governing body, to step back and to look at our economy as it impacts our housing. When we're looking at transient occupancy, when we're looking at the lack of affordable housing to both rent and to buy, we have to look at those acting together, not in siloed. Because state government works in silos. We at the county level have to dismantle those silos so that we can do, so we can do the services for our people that we need to have here. I see these policy questions. I, I think they're a good start. But I think we, as the governing body, need to get clear on what we want to do about our economy and our housing together before we go forward. I, I don't want to see more people come in from the unincorporated areas. They have, they have city housing councils. This is the county board of commissioners. We already have, you know, two members who very capably represent incorporated areas. So we're balancing and harmonizing there. And that balance and harmony is really, I think, what we're looking for all through this document. I want to talk some more about this. This is too important to rush through. That's just what I had to say this morning. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other comments, questions?
Well, here's a, here's a personal point of disappointment. I apologize, I didn't get with the planning department director to raise this before. But I've been talking about mass timber technology, the impact it could have on our local economy to provide a stable tax base, stable, adequate income for people's jobs and housing that's, that makes value added to forest products industries. So it would be good all the way around. I didn't see it mentioned anywhere here. Instead, I saw mobile homes. So that's just my personal point of disappointment because my understanding is we need to have homes that are built to last insofar as possible. And I have a great deal of concern about the quality of that housing stock in terms of its durability in this environment. I also didn't see any mention of the Community Action Team, which does a lot of rehabbing in our area and which operates Elk Creek Terrace, which is low-income housing in Cannon Beach. So good work, very good work, as far as it went. For me, there were some missing pieces. And I'd like to have us look at filling in some of those missing pieces. And again, look at the, at the broader context of the economy related to the environment, related to everything within the comprehensive land and water use plan. All right, I think I'm done now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Any other comments, questions? Gail?
Thank you. I do want to point out for Commissioner Thompson, it didn't get mentioned in Gold Ten, but we'll put it in. But it is in six or 13, I forget which one. We did a whole section on cross laminated timber. So that really was my entire presentation. Really, if there's any other comments or directions from the board or anything about the policy questions, otherwise my, my work here is done for today.
Okay, these are, yeah, these are important questions to try to answer and to give direction on. Do we have any, any comments at this time? And as far as what we can give to staff? Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, sir. And, and thank you, Director Henrickson, for putting, for putting my pet cause in the, at least in other segments of the plan. I, I think that we need to be together and we need to be talking about these issues. This, this is so much the heart of our really number one question. If people don't have housing, we can't do anything else. So it's, it's pivotal, it's essential. I don't know how we find the time and the space to schedule a facilitated conversation. But housing has just got to be so important in our strategic plan. So trying to knit those together. I guess the other thing I would say, as a board member, I'm doing work with County Solutions. County Solutions has a water inventory that we're working on. County Solutions is also working on some housing issues. Other commissioners are working on things. We have the blessing of a culture change that results from our increasing effectiveness as a governing body, as a staff, as a county government. I think, I think that's got to be highlighted in our strategic planning with our PSU consultant. We're not used to this way of operating, I think. How do I understand, you know, the stages of development of the work of every other commissioner and the staff so that we're being most effective in the work that we're doing together? I, I want us to, I want us to look at that. I want us to talk about that. I want us to have ways of engaging with that that produce most value for the people in Klaasup County. That's what I'm after. Thank you.
Commissioner Webb?
Yeah, I have a question, I guess, for Ms. Henrickson. Does, you've presented us here now, I think, a couple of times with sort of wanting the, the board of commissioners to respond to some policy questions. I'm not clear where our citizen input status is, for instance, on this particular goal. Has, has this been all the way through our planning area advisory committees? Has it been through the planning commission? That's my question. What, you know, where are we in the process for Gold Ten?
Yeah, so as far as Gold Ten goes, this is the first draft that we've put out. And the board is seeing it before anybody else just because we do have these policy questions. And what we do as staff then is we take your discussion today and we include that with our package that will go first to the joint planning commission countywide meeting and then to the planning commission itself. This is, Gold Ten is scheduled to go to that joint planning commission countywide meeting on January 25th. And then it would go to the planning commission at their February meeting, which would be February 8th. And so we do provide your, your input and discussion with our agenda package so that all the commissions are aware of what the board has discussed as well.
So, so when does it, when does it get discussed by our planning area groups?
It does not because with our new schedule that the board gave staff the go-ahead to move forward with in June, we are concentrating now only on completing those community plans in the planning area groups. And so at the beginning of my presentation today on Gold Ten, I, I did remind the board if they, if you have some input about our public participation process and then scheduling sessions in your planning areas or your districts so that we can do more public outreach. And we'd be looking at doing that after the holidays. So in January, moving forward.
Thank you, Gail.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb. Commissioner Bangs?
A quick question in regards to the public outreach. How expensive or is there an expense associated with our online surveys? Because I know a lot of folks that would love to weigh in, especially on this particular goal, but may or may not be able to attend a meeting. And so is there a methodology that is, you know, a, a low cost for the county in order to harvest some of these thoughts and feelings from our constituents? And then to follow that, just have a, a section within the survey that allows people to say what district they live in?
Yes, so we do have a survey software that we can use to send that out. We also have our Story Map that has been up on our website since we started the comp plan update process. And we have been trying to add in goals with questions, and there are questions on there. So we have, we do have that ability and there really wouldn't be any expense associated with it until Monica tells me otherwise.
And I would just like to add to Gail's point that she talked about and which was in the Friday update that we sent out. You know, we're looking at a variety of options to receive that public input. And so if the board has particular types of ways for the public to provide that input, whether it's through a community meeting, whether it's through a survey, if, if you just want to provide that feedback to either the county manager's office or Gail, so that way she can begin incorporating and planning for that after January.
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, sir. Well, to that point, my concern is that we hear from everybody. I know we have, we have devoted, capable community volunteers of decades or generations standing. I'm so grateful to them. And I think it's our job to listen broadly to everybody, the folks who aren't used to being heard from. How do we make it easy? So I'm delighted to hear about a survey. I don't want to give unreasonable expectations for the folks who are so capable and expert and have the long-term involvement because our job is to hear everybody. How do we have the capacity to hear everybody? For me, that's the question I have as a commissioner because I want to hear from everybody. And then we together balance and harmonize everything we hear for the most good for the most people. And that's the challenge. I think as we engage in community outreach, it needs to be, it needs to be expansive and efficient and effective. That's a tall order. I don't know how to reach people who, who maybe don't have all the time in the world or all the energy in the world to participate in this, whose needs still need to be taken into account if we're to have a vibrant community where everybody flourishes. That's what I want to have, a vibrant community where everybody flourishes. And the input for me is geared toward producing that end product. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Bangs?
One last comment as I'm reading through all these things again. I would, I would really like the county to look into with, I mean, I, with goal one, with, with statement number one over here, with over 80% of our land in an unincorporated county designated to resource land, where can we build? I would really like to look into that and actually get a, a, I know we're doing it for industrial or we've talked about doing it for industrial. I think we should do it for residential also and really actually find out, do we have some work to build? And if so, what can we do to help, to help incentivize, to help, just to help folks out? I, I, I mean, it's, it's great to talk about the housing crisis. We have one. It's just, can we solve it? And so I don't, like, I'd love to know how many acres we have available to build on or where is it located? Or, I mean, in that way, we know what cities to talk to and what water districts to talk to and so on and so forth. So I just think we need some clarification or clarity here.
Thank you, Commissioner Bangs. Commissioner Toyoka?
Yeah, just like on the item six on this slide, you know, the, including comprehensive plan require developed standards for alternate forms of temporary transitional housing. You know, and in the packet, I'm referring it to, you know, one item in particular, like RV occupation and substandard housing and tents. I know cities have different regulations. But in terms of if, if we're putting out a policy countywide, so, so standards and procedures, I mean, I'd get stopped constantly by residents here when cities are allowing people to park RVs, pitch tents in city parks, county parks, whatever. But there, the, that's, you know, may be considered facilitating homeless, you know, whatever. But like I said, on the other part, there's the infringement. The homeowners nearby, apartment dwellers, people who live there, safety is a factor. The kids can't go to the parks. They have, you know, people stealing catalytic converters out of their cars during the nights. There's issues that arise. Business owners is driving away business. So I think as we look at this and we're trying to say, how do we facilitate? That's why I don't like that word. It's a kind of an enabling word. But we have to come up with these standards and procedures that is beneficial to all. I don't believe that, you know, giving away something that's not yours is not compassion. So I think that we cannot give away the, the things that people have earned to help someone else. We have to be thoughtful in that process, especially when it comes to alternate forms of housing or transitional housing. If the county's going to get into that and say, here's standards and procedures, we have to look at those closely and not infringe upon others to, to, you know, in the false sense of compassion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Toyoka. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, sir. I appreciate, I appreciate those words. I think we're, we think similarly in that we have to balance and harmonize for all. I appreciate the, we don't want to punish people who are behaving well. We don't want to demonize people who are not able to behave as well as, as we would like them to. I mean, how do we not have unintended consequences from well-meaning endeavors? How do we really encourage that vibrant community that people want to be able to live in? Everybody wants to be able to live in. Where there are community standards, there is community achievement. But of course, there has to be compassion, but it has to be done thoughtfully. I agree with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Good comments, everyone. I think procedurally, we, what I've heard a lot about is collaboration and getting public input and being able to use that to help formulate these policies. But procedurally, Gail, I mean, you're looking for- But procedurally, Gail, I mean, you're looking for some kind of comments from the commission. And I know that I would like to think about these a little bit more and have an opportunity to, to maybe give, give my perspective on, on some of these. I, I have thoughts about them, but probably not fully formed. I'd like to, like, maybe, maybe have a little more opportunity to, to revisit some of these. Can we, what would be, what would be best to do that? Could we just kind of bring this back at some point and, and all of us provide some direction on knowing that we're going to continue the process with the public and, and knowing that we're going to try to, you know, set up, maybe, maybe we need to have a summit with the cities once again to, to talk about strategies for, for addressing housing throughout the county. I think there's a number of ways that we can, can go on these, but as, as far as pointing our community development director in the right direction, do we want to take, take, take another work session or time in another work session to, to bring this back and, and then maybe continue the discussion? Or what is the thought of the commission? Commissioner Bangs?
I'm, I'm wondering if we can engage our communities in discussion and then circle back. I don't know if that, that's a thought, you know? Maybe we can give individual feedback to Gail moving forward. I, I just, I mean, I guess I could go through the list and, and tell her, yes, no, yes, no, yes, no. Or, or we can at least start the survey or at least start, you know, the, the first level of engagement. I have a hard time making decisions about something where, you know, I haven't really talked a whole lot with my, my community about it, so.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Bangs. Commissioner Toyoka?
Is it allowable, I was thinking, if we as individually commissioners can put down our thoughts, submit them to Gail, she can consolidate it before another work session? Some, there's a lot of commonality in her comments to prevent redundancy, but I think it would reinforce that, you know, I think for the most part, we're all on the same page. But I think it would help Gail if we, if we could submit our notes to Gail, she can consolidate them before next planning session to discuss this.
Thank you, Commissioner Toyoka. Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you. I agree with that approach. I would also like to know about, I want to say, a comprehensive system of community engagement that's all the way through Clatsop County, corner to corner, border to border. I don't want to leave people out in this. And, and it's a challenge that I don't know that we've ever addressed adequately. So yes, what he said and some more, some more blue sky brainstorming. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Webb?
Excuse me. I, I do not support the idea of individual commissioners submitting to staff how they feel about things unless those comments are attributed to those commissioners and published. We have a lot of citizens out there who are pretty angry about the fact that this commission appears not to discuss things as robustly as we have today, actually. This has been very refreshing. And the, there is great opposition among our constituents about commissioners meeting one-on-one with staff and then the staff then is burdened with what? Drawing some consensus? No, I'm sorry. That's not what we were elected to do. We were elected to reach consensus as a group. And I'm just, I'm getting, I'm just getting an awful lot of negative feedback. The, the, my other point here, which I'm getting enormous negative feedback, is that three years ago, we created a system for citizen input. That citizen input worked very, very well until, I don't know, when was it? That somehow, was it this board that decided that the work that those citizens had put in over the past three years was rather inconsequential or needed to be redone or needed to be refocused? I don't agree with that. I have attended over the past three years, many, many, many community advisory committees that have been very straightforward and robust. I don't know how many total number of citizens were involved, but it was pretty significant. And I'm a little concerned that we are dissing those people and that we've said, well, you were asked to help us formulate the comp plan, but now we've changed our minds and we think that you just ought to do your area plan. Well, you know what? Comp plan is much more important because a comp plan should be driving those area plans. And I'm becoming increasingly concerned about the way we have dissed our citizens who have come forward, folks who volunteered and who persevered through hours and hours of homework and through many, many hours of meetings. And now suddenly we said, well, thanks, but, you know, go do something else. I'm sorry, I find that very, very insulting. And it seems to be a, a, a move that this board is taking that, that I find very, very disrespectful of the citizens who have indeed. It's, what are we saying? Are we saying, wait a minute, three years of very involved people who had to educate themselves to make these decisions, chuck that and let's do a survey? What? You can't do a comp plan with a survey. Land use law in Oregon is extremely complicated. You have to become, you have to become smart in something. You have to become at least informed in something before you can, you can provide good citizen input. I'm sorry, but I see this as just one more slap in the face to all those wonderful people who dedicated three years of their lives to, to a process that somehow we as a commission don't value? Sorry. And I do, I, well, and I would like to say that I think that when, that, that when we do this process of individual commissioners talking to staff and not discussing issues together, then we are actually lending ourselves to, to some kind of legis, of lawsuits from our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb. I just want to backtrack. You know, my discussion and my, my posing this to the rest of the commission was not to try to circumvent the public process. I simply wanted what was the most expedient way to move forward and have an opportunity for all of us to kind of contemplate this and provide input. And I also think this is, as Gail mentioned, the first time that we're having a look at these policy questions. And there is, there is a lot, a long way to go that we all agree to. You know, that we did want to have this discussion and we wanted to engage others. We've all said that in this, over the course of the last half an hour, that we want to make sure that we get public input in this process. I, I do agree with you that it's troublesome if we don't make this transparent. And so I think public comments, I mean, comments from the commissioners certainly can be out in the open and compiled in such a way that people know who said what. And I, I have no issue with that and I don't think that that anybody else does. But I just wanted to have an opportunity for us to be able to say or to kind of think on this and be able to say what we think on some of these topics and provide some direction for our community development director so that at the end of the process, we're not coming back and saying, well, you know, I don't agree with any of this and this isn't what I intended. I, I think we just, we need to be able to, to, to give some kind of framework for how we're going to go forward. So I certainly don't have a problem with us being able to provide comments and I certainly don't have a problem with people knowing what my comments are and having those out in front of people during our work session so that they know what I said. Commissioner Bangs?
So I, I think I'm just going to be very clear in, in, in my statement that I am going to make here today. I do not appreciate assumptions being made by fellow commissioners about how I communicate with staff or do not communicate with staff. I will be very clear, I do not traditionally have one-on-one meetings with any staff. I live out loud. I think many commissioners could probably agree with that statement, that nobody questions where my thought processes are at any point of time or day. I do not like the assumption made in a public meeting that something is happening through the back door because that's an insult to my character. And I'm just going to leave it right there. I can honestly say I don't regularly meet with, with Director Hendrickson. So I, I just want to be clear that, that as we move forward, I no longer want to hear that assumption made about my character because that is not happening. I can attest that that is not happening and our, our staff can attest that that is not happening. So please, in the future, when speaking about me in a public forum, that we do not make
Okay. Any other question, comments? Okay, if not, we'll go ahead and, we don't have any other items on the agenda. I, I personally was hoping we could provide some comments if people are okay with that and, and then have them compiled and, and discuss once again in a work session. People are agreeable to that? All right. Anything else on the agenda? If not, we'll go ahead and adjourn the day. Thank you. Thank you, Gail.